Calling this meeting to order at six o'clock for the Holyoke School Committee. Just a little bit housekeeping first. On March twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, Governor Haley signing to law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to open meeting law to March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at the meeting location, and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Dr. Rivera Cologne.
Here.
Mr. Sheen.
Present.
LaFave.
Present.
Ms. LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Tensley Williams.
Here.
Mr. Saza.
Here.
Mr. Willehan.
Here.
Mr. Colomore.
Here.
Present. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I defy the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-eight, Section Twenty, I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and that the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. We would like to welcome Sullivan Middle School for our student showcase.
Yes, Mr. We have our principal, Mr. Ratray here. If you could just briefly introduce what you're here to showcase? Is the microphone on?
I don't think so.
I'll start over. That's better. I'll do it better this time anyway. It's nice to be back. We brought our student ambassadors here, which are the future leaders of the city. So in twenty years, when you all are in school committee and mayor, and this is where you're going to be seated, I wanted to recognize the adults who are here, who have worked with the student ambassadors, but also just in general in our school. Ms. Chapetelli and Ms. Rivera Freitas are assistant principals, Ms. DeJesus, Ms. Marquez, and especially Ms. Olivia Rivera, who's an eighth-grade ELA teacher and really has done the most work with our student ambassadors. They're well-prepared, as you're going to see here in a moment. So I'm gonna, I know when I should stop talking, listen to the student ambassador. So I'm gonna pass over the microphone to them.
Hi. What is a student ambassador? A student ambassador? Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Zoe Rodriguez. A student ambassador is a student who embodies the values of reach, serves as a representative of their classmates, and promotes various school activities and initiatives. Student ambassadors are chosen for their exceptional communication skills and abilities to advocate for the ideas and perspectives of Sullivan's student bodies. Hi, my name is Lila Rodriguez, and I will be continuing of what a student ambassador is. The student ambassador program is highly competitive. Opportunities open to all students. Previously, ambassadors visit every homeroom to promote the program. This year, seventh and eighth grade ambassadors were selected based on their prior participation and had to reapply and complete an interview process. Participation in this program remains highly selected.
Hi, my name is Andrew Cologne, and I am talking about the requirements to apply. Students interested in applying to the program had to meet the following criteria. They had to send an application with three teacher references, had to follow the reach values, have no more than four referrals, have no more than five absences, be in good academic standing, and submit their application forms by September thirtieth.
Hi, my name is Sophia Camacho, and I'm going to be talking about the current ambassadors. This year's ambassadors represent a diverse group of students from A House, B House, TIP, the dual-language program, and the newcomers' academy. The program includes a total of thirty-seven ambassadors. Five from fifth, five from sixth grade, fifteen from seventh grade, fifteen from eighth grade. A wait, a waitlist has been established, and then, and the new opening will be received in the coming year.
Hello, I'm Patrick Smith O'Connor, and I'm presenting roles and responsibilities. Student ambassadors play a vital role as school leaders. The program offers us the chance to develop our leadership and communication skills, while inspiring our peers to take an active role in representing Sullivan, uh, in representing Sullivan. Ambassadors support new students, lead by example, provide constructive feedback, and advocate for meaningful changes within the school.
Hi, my name is Miles. For example, our ambassadors recently collaborated with SEDEXO representatives to advocate for improvements to the lunch program, demonstrating their dedication to enhancing the school experience for all students.
Hi, my name is Xavier Rodriguez, and this is.
Hi, my name is Mia Legoy.
And we're going to be talking about what ambassadors are actively involved in. Ambassador, ambassadors are actively involved in morning announcements to inform students of the events for each day at Sullivan, supporting school events and activities such as trips for students and incentives, and assisting the main office by collecting papers or passing out food drive boxes to classes.
They are also involved in performing other duties as needed, like helping other peers, advocating for the student body, and speaking up for others when something is wrong. As role models, ambassadors are expected to keep up with their grades and behavioral standards. They are held accountable for making up any assignments missed due to ambassador duties or weekly meetings. Students who fail to meet these expectations may have their ambassador status reviewed, which could result in a suspension of privileges.
In addition to their responsibilities, ambassadors participate in team-building activities, serve as a voice for their peers, and offer ideas to school administration and stakeholders to better shape the school community.
Hello again. Mia could not make it today, so I'll be presenting her part. Um, for the rest of this year, uh, we ambassadors have some goals for ourselves. Last year, we met with Holyoke High School students who led the restorative justice work at the high school. We would like to continue this work at Sullivan. We would also like to raise money so that we can have some funds to use for different school projects. Also, earlier this year, we participated in the middle school student leadership conference at AIC. It was a great experience, and we hope to participate more, oh, in more events like that.
Hi, my name is Sophia Fonseca, and I will continue listing some of our goals. Four, we want to keep giving feedback on the PBIS systems. Five, we want to keep giving feedback to our principal on different aspects of the school. And lastly, we want to keep working to improve our food.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
First of all, thank you so much for being here. And were any of you nervous to speak? I still do. So no worries if you do, and if you don't, good for you. Um, what does it feel to be an ambassador?
It feels really good being able to be the voice for people that don't have as much of a bigger voice as certain people like us. So it feels good to be able to, to be that voice for other people. Anything else?
Anybody else wants to add anything?
It feels really nice because there's not a lot of people like us who are willing to get up and speak their opinion and say the things that we really need to work on in our school. So it feels really nice.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, what do you do to lead by example? Can you give me an example?
So basically, we just are following our reach values, which is respecting and being like a role model for the younger students. And even if you're a sixth grader, there's still ways that you can be a role model for yourself. So we'd be like respectful, stay in our classes, we get good grades.
Else? I was, I was just wondering, um, do any of you have the aspirations of holding like an office once you get to high school for like class president, vice president? I would think with a lot of your leadership, you would be, it would be a great position for you. Thank you.
Mr. Willehan. Well, Ms. Tensley Williams.
First of all, I'm very proud of every one of you. I'm Ward Two School Committee, Ms. Tensley Williams, Rosalie Williams. If you need anything whatsoever from me, please call me. This button says if you mess with kids, you mess with me. Okay? So I'm really serious about that. It doesn't matter which ward you're in. So call on me and I'll be there. Welcome.
Mr. Willehan.
Thank you. You guys are great. Um, what are your meetings? Are they during school or are they?
So yes, we usually, we pick a day of the week that works best for all of us, and then we will meet at that time for however much time we need, and we'll go through everything at those meetings.
Ms. LaFave.
Thank you, guys, for coming. So real quickly, just to get a better understanding of the layout of your school, and I heard something like A House, B House. You have the TIP program. So what does it mean to be in A House? What does it mean to be in B House? And when we're talking about those who are chosen for student ambassador, are there any from the TIP program?
Um, yeah, there's a few from the TIP program that we, um, like to have. A House is mostly English side, where, um, where people who don't do dual language, they go on that side. And then for B House, it's most likely dual-language program where we have the newcomers and, oh, it's all the way around. My bad. Oh, right. My bad. I'm thinking, thinking of something else. Anyways, yeah, we have, um, I don't think, do we have? Oh, yeah, we do have a few newcomers in our, in the ambassadors.
Ms. LeBron Martinez.
I actually admire this because this is some of the, this is one of my, my, my always thinking of youth leading our communities, right? But my question, um, for the newcomers, this is one of the concerns I've always had as a school committee before. Newcomers, especially those who do not master the language, they feel left out. How do you welcome someone like that being an ambassador? What do you do for somebody that is new in the school? It feels isolated, sitting in the, in the cafeteria by themselves. What do you guys do? Do you do anything about that or just curious?
Yes, we do. For the newcomers, if we're, as an ambassador, what we do in our meetings sometimes is that we do team building so we can get to know each other more. And during lunch, some ambassadors, actually, I see a lot, um, actually sit with some newcomers, or they make sure that they're included. Like, we had a few newcomers, I think, last year, where we were very interested as ambassadors to know, to get to know more about them, and we got to sit with them, and we got to talk. And it was really cool, and we got to learn a lot of stuff about where they, where they were from and all that.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
Um, I just have one question. It's nice to see Mr. Ratray here. Um, if I need to get in touch with the group, would I call you?
Here, I would like to speak on the newcomer program too. For the most part, a lot of the people in A House are in dual language, so there's a vast majority of them. And a lot of the ambassadors, like down there, are also, um, part of the dual-language program. So if you are part of the dual-language program, it's nice to try to approach someone who's from the newcomer program in their own native language, which can really help you just connect to them on a deeper level. Like, I have a, uh, I have someone in my gym class who I, um, I play soccer with a lot. And I was able to connect with him by speaking Spanish with him. So by using certain programs that we already have pre-existing, the ambassadors are able to connect with more people.
Get to practice, correct?
Pretty much, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you for your leadership. Uh, it makes me so proud to see all of you speak with so much confidence, to be well-prepared today. Um, and, you know, the qualities that we try to instill in all of our students, you guys, you, you guys are just right on, on par and exceeding those expectations in terms of the leadership, the public speaking, the preparedness, the empathy for the others, and caring, and, and advocating for, for the, what you want in your school community. I know a bunch of you, um, are not afraid to, to reach out to Mr. Soto himself and, and ask for anything. I've, I've spoken to many of you individually, and I'm just, uh, extremely proud. I want, I want you to embrace this opportunity that you have, being an ambassador, and apply it everywhere you go. When you get to the high school, make sure you're getting involved, getting in that network, hanging around the right people, advocating for yourselves. When you get out into the real world, it's going to be the same thing. Make sure you're surrounding yourself with people that, um, you know, that, that, uh, that are just like you, uh, and, and always constantly advocating for doing the right thing. So, uh, again, just so proud of all of you and, and keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Colomore.
Yes, can one of you tell me what your capacity is in a cafeteria? Is, is there a group of you or is it just one person that wants to be in the cafeterias?
Could you repeat your question?
What? The ambassadors within the cafeteria, what, what do they do to help other students in the cafeteria get along with others and work, work together to make the cafeteria a better place to, uh, join hands and get together and really enjoy what you're doing?
Some of us student ambassadors like to go to kids who sit alone or kids who just, just don't like to be with anybody and make sure that they're okay, and make sure that nothing's wrong, or if they need somebody to talk to. When there's arguments in the cafeteria, mostly we make sure to tell a trusted adult so they can handle with it. I personally don't, um, sit in the cafeteria, but when there's kids around in the hallway, I like to make sure they're getting where they need to be and where they need to go, and I just like to make sure that they're all in a safe, um, environment and make sure they're all happy.
Thank you very much.
Bravo.
I'm not sure who can answer this, but how long has this program been in place? And, and what was the inspiration to start it?
Hi, so I'm Mrs. Rivera. Um, a long time ago, I would actually want to shout out Mrs. DeJesus had introduced student ambassadors to me when we were Verda slash HMS. From there, I decided to take on the gauntlet, and I really wanted to inspire and promote our youth. I believe student voice is important and diversity, and being in Holyoke as an educator, um, I really want to push forward with this program. I did get support from my principal, Mr. Ratray, and we had some other student, um, teachers and other people join us. Ever since then, like we said, we, it's been selective, it's been competitive, it's been growing. It has grown from last year as well. I had originally maybe twenty applicants, and then next thing I know, I had forty applicants applying. So it was like, whoa. So the program is growing, and we are keeping it sixth, seventh, and eighth, and we're trying to get new recruits in. We also have make the way for eighth graders, or eighth graders who are hopefully going to join the ambassadors in high school. That's my hope. Uh, we are also making sure they promote for sixth and seventh, so we can have some more seventh graders. We'll be in the eighth grade. We're promoting the seventh graders, and then hopefully getting interest of the new sixth graders coming in. So it's a growing program. It's been about more than four years, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Soto.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, again, not a question, but, um, a little bit of a push. Uh, I, you know, listening to the criteria of what it takes to be a student ambassador, I'm hoping that there's been some thought put into some kids that might not meet that criteria, but that, uh, being a part of a group like this would really, really help support them. I have a couple of friends in mind that, you know, might feel excluded because they, they don't have the attendance, or they may have, uh, you know, uh, more than four referrals, or was it four?
Yeah.
Um, so I would just, I would just encourage some thought around that, and, and students that might be interested that don't meet that criteria. How do the student ambassadors help them to get there where, where they need to go? Or how do we, as a, a school community, help support, uh, someone that's interested in being a part of, you know, uh, of, of this, uh, student ambassador group? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's give a round of applause to Sullivan Middle School Student Ambassador. Ms. Tensley Williams.
I have one more question. Uh, the parents, do you have a special time when the parents can meet, or can they go to your meetings?
Our meetings are normally held during the school day, but we have been making sure we're communicating with families. And the families also, uh, get to see the application process as well and give them feedback and like why they might want to apply. And then also, I just want to follow too, we do have a few students that, yes, we have high criteria, but we also have trial periods for some of our students to be able to try and succeed. Um, we do have openings coming up soon, so we are hoping that watching our student ambassadors will inspire some other kids to maybe start going onto this leadership path. And we've also asked our student ambassadors to talk to some of our students that we really would like to have a part of the program. Um, so again, we're constantly growing, and then we would love to have more parent involvement in the future. Uh, that is something we're going to be talking about in the next couple of meetings as well.
Thank you. My son started out at Sullivan. They graduated from Dean, so I'm a mother that's been around. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Feliciano, do we have any public comment?
Yeah.
Excellent. Moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Bravo.
Thank you. I was going to say a picture would be helpful. Thank you.
Do we have any of our, of our student reports, maybe online? Okay. Then let's move on to the superintendent report. Mr. Soto.
All right. So I, um, included in your packet, there's a, there's a, a few things that's, uh, in the superintendent report, and one of them is just an update on, um, on our contract employees. We have, um, you know, about thirteen people that, uh, they're, they're at the end of their three-year contract. Um, this ranges from directors to principals, and I know that we're, you know, we're, right now, we're in the middle of talking about local control, and, and, uh, starting July first. Normally, how I've handled renewing contracts for, for those individuals is we work, we go through the, you know, evaluation process and determine, you know, uh, if we're ready to renew somebody's contract. Um, and I just wanted to update the school committee that we're, you know, we're at a point in the school year where we have to make those determinations. You know, there's, uh, all, all of the, the ones that are on the list in terms of their contracts ending this coming year are, are people that are in good standing with the Holyoke Public Schools and have had good evaluations. So, um, I'm looking to, uh, engage in that process where we, where, where we have those conversations with those individuals that have expiring contracts.
Ms. LaFave.
I'm just looking at the packet. I don't, I see that it's on the item agenda. Something that I was supposed to click on? No.
No, I, I mean, I, I didn't include names.
No, no, not names. I just mean like departments or something. I thought you, when you said I submitted, you know, you're in the packet, I'm thinking, I'm looking for something. I'm just going to put it that way. Okay, so.
And I didn't want to include any of those details just because it's easy to identify who the person is if you put their title there, so. Um, get to the level of conversations around this. I just wanted to make sure I had your blessing to kind of continue how we would normally do, uh, and, and disregard, you know, the getting out of
So then, I'm sorry. So then what you're asking for is sort of like a motion, um, in regards for you to extend their contract for a certain amount of time, renew their contract for a certain amount of time? That's the question, correct?
Yeah, the question is, you know, normally I would just engage in that process now, whether I'm going to extend on renew, or, you know, but, um, typically, we have done three-year contracts for those individuals. Everybody that is on that list has a contract, and, uh, normally come, you know, expiration time, around this time of year is when we engage in those conversations to renew for another three years.
So, thank you. Mayor Garcia.
So, so there, so these are folks that their contracts are up June thirty. We're looking to start local control in July one. From now to June thirty, you're the receiver. You currently have that power and authority to go forward, but you're just being mindful of this transition in, into local control and just trying to seek direction or blessings from the school board, if I get that correctly. Yeah, that, that's exactly it. I mean, these are, uh, you know, everybody's paying attention to the news, everybody's seeing, and, you know, many of them are wondering like, what does this mean for me? Do I have a job next year, Anthony? Like, what's going on? And I'm looking, you know, especially for those individuals that we're, we're, are, are doing great work and we want to retain. I'm looking to be able to move forward and, and with confidence, knowing that the school committee is, is going to support, um, be moving in that direction. So I'm of the opinion that, like, as a school board focusing on transitioning into local control and having turnover in positions can contribute to some complexity in that transition. And so I, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I'm, I'm strongly supportive. You know, if you're the receiver right now, it's under your power, control, and authority, and if you're saying that they have good reviews under your, uh, performance evaluation, while we've had a good system reporting back to us, um, uh, your processes and your systems, I feel confident in superintendent going forward with those. But that's just, you know, my opinion, not the rest of the body, so.
Ms. Wilson.
So thank you for sharing that with us. Um, I believe this is in your purview. So this is not something that even when we are in local control, that we would not be like discussing, because this is in your control to manage the day-to-day operations of the school committee. I just want to make sure that I'm in the, in the right mindset, that this was a, a courtesy, um, in some regards, because this is in the normal, even if you weren't the receiver and you were the superintendent, this is your job. Okay, I just wanted to be clear that that is the correct thought process.
Mr. Sheen.
Yeah, I, I was going to comment similar, but, so, I, I guess unless it's, the only thing where there's some gray area is the positions that the school committee actually approved the contract. So like assistant superintendent, head director, business manager, those ones. So I think that those are the only ones that, I mean, but it's still like your receiver, so get that. And don't the contracts, even at the time of expiration, there's not a one-year automatic renewal if they're not told they're not renewed?
I mean, it's not a, at this point in time, if we had somebody's contract expiring, they would be talking to their supervisor about renewing their contract. And if there's no conversation, which has never been the case, if there's not a conversation of like, yeah, we're renewing, um, and let's say for, for whatever reason, that conversation that never happens, that person would stay employed. It's just they wouldn't be under a contract. They would be an at-will employee at that, at that time.
Okay, so the terms of their contract doesn't carry out in extra time?
Correct.
Ms. LeBron Martinez.
But, uh, so concerning to me, not as a body, um, speaking, so I know that we have a shortage of teachers. Are, should we be concerned that we may lose and not make the?
I think those are, these are two completely independent conversations. Our shortage of teachers has nothing to do with these, these contracted employees.
Ms. LaFave.
Motion to allow the current receiver slash superintendent, um, to review and determine, uh, renewal of contracts for contracted employees? I, I don't, however you.
No.
Power was proposed.
Go ahead Devon. I mean, sorry, Madam Chair. Nice chair.
Mr. Sheen.
Um, I'm just going to say that since something hasn't moved in seconded just for the record, um, I'm going to vote against it and not for the purposes of that I don't support the superintendent doing what he's done, but I just don't think it matters. So I'm gonna just know my reasons for voting no.
Ms. Wilson.
I will be doing the same. I'll be voting no as well, based upon the same thought process.
Mayor Garcia.
I don't, I don't, I mean, yeah, there is a motion on the table unless you want to withdraw, but we don't have to vote on it. You just, we just tell the superintendent to do your job and good luck.
Ms. LaFave.
Okay, so I think we all need to be on the same page. And apparently I was not on that page, even though I fully understood what was being said. The facial expressions reveal something else. So now that I fully understand, I will withdraw my motion because it's your job anyways.
I second the draw.
Thank you. Motion has been withdrawn.
Um, uh, the next item on the agenda is the Panorama survey. And normally we go through, uh, very, you know, lengthy presentation. Um, I've included it in your packet. I don't, I don't want to go through the entire presentation. Um, I promised that we would come back and, and revisit it when we talked about the Panorama survey window coming. Um, I did want to highlight some, some bright spots. So, um, it, it really does align pretty nicely to, um, our focus areas for, for the current year. You know, we got a lot of feedback through the teacher, uh, retention work group and through Panorama last year around, um, around retention efforts. And we did see that more teachers expressed greater interest in remaining in Holyoke long-term. Um, and we got a lot of feedback on professional development. There's a section in there that talks about district leadership. And it was, it was, uh, pretty low last year, but when you drill down to the actual question being asked, the one question that they ask is, does the, uh, professional development offered by central office and, uh, school base, does it help you improve your practice? And we saw an increase in that. Uh, you know, we, we, we got a new schedule this year where, uh, we got that early release on Wednesday where, where teachers are coming together for a longer block of time. Um, that was a change that we made based on Panorama last year and teacher retention work group last year. Um, and we, you know, we did customize or not customize. We tried to differentiate professional learning as much as possible based on feedback we've received. So it looks like some of the efforts that we have, uh, put in place in those focus areas, um, you know, have, have, have garnered a little bit of increases, uh, in, in those particular areas. But there's still, you know, I think the biggest, one of the biggest areas for improvement that we saw is, uh, students reporting low levels of engagement and, uh, perseverance and grit. So, you know, one of the questions is when you fail at a task, how, 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 uh, how likely are you to try again? Or, uh, and, and, you know, students responded unfavorably to that question. So we are, you know, at the way, what we've done with this Panorama data, um, is we, we've made sure that each principal is reviewing it. I was actually at, um, at a couple of schools on January 3rd when they were having their professional development. And that was some of the, this was some of the information that was covered at professional development is, uh, you know, the principals going through the results with their, with all of their teachers and all of their staff. And then talking about what their, you know, what their glows, what their grows and what their next steps were. And I think that's the most powerful, like, way we use Panorama is principals actually look at their data, look at their information and work with their teams to say, okay, based on what we're hearing from staff, from students, from families, um, what is it that we can do to address, you know, to, to strengthen some of, you know, uh, the things that are positive in there and continue with that momentum? And what are some things that we need to do to address some of the concerns that were brought up in our Panorama data? And, um, I put together a chart that's also in your packet that goes school by school so that you can see from the student survey, the family survey, the teacher survey and the staff survey, what are some of the glows, grows and next steps? And I think that's, you know, that, that's the, you know, best use of this Panorama data. And, uh, you know, one of the things that, you know, at the district level, we got to figure out a way to get more families to, to engage in this survey. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we, we had pretty strong participation from families. Um, and this year we've seen a continual dip in, in participation from families over the last couple of years, um, down to the 600 range when, you know, last year was, we were in the 800 range, I believe. Um, so we gotta, you know, as, as a team, we gotta figure out what is, how, you know, what did we do in 21 and 22 that, that helped get, you know, 1,200 families to, to respond to the survey versus right now we're seeing half of that. So, um, we've extended the window. We've, you know, we've blasted it out district-wide. We've had our family engagement team, uh, members, you know, grabbing parents in the, in the, you know, in the drop-off line. Uh, so we've tried a, a bunch of things, but you know, that's an area that, that as a district, we need to come together and figure out like, how do we get participation up with, from, um, from our families?
Mr. Willian.
Thank you for the report. Um, thank you for breaking down by each school too. Um, yeah, the family, uh, the family participation was, was a little lax. I just noticed that. I think the families are, they're mainly surveyed out. You know, they had so many surveys there in COVID. And, you know, people had more time on their hands to answer them during COVID too, if you're home. So I just think nationwide, I've heard that we're just, you know, the surveys, you know, they're, they're just down because, you know, they're, the families have just, it had so many surveys. So I don't know whether, how we can make that, you know, you know, um, give them some sort of bonus points to participate, but it's important to have the families, um, respond. Thank you.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
When I read the survey, I was very unhappy. Um, if, if there's anything, you know, that we can do as a school board to be helpful, um, let me know because when I read it, I was sad. So we got to do some picking up.
Anything in particular that made you sad?
Yes, the questions, um, let's see. How effective is the district's evaluation system in helping you improve? Um, grades without my glasses, grades, um, it says favorable. And then, um, the, the grades, I was looking at what the, um, without my glasses on, this is kind of tough. But the scores were very low, like this one here says, um, how effective is the district's evaluation system in helping you improve? Thirty-four percent went down to minus three. Um, then it says, when the district makes important, uh, decisions, how much input do, do the staff, uh, have? Twenty-eight percent went down to plus two.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of rough. And if we can do anything to get these numbers up, please, let's try.
Ms. Wilson.
I guess my concern was over the, um, the lower and dropping scores for, uh, student surveys about school engagement.
Yeah.
I mean, that is, um, you know, pretty significant in my mind that you have from sixth to 12th grade, seventeen percent now are, I, I guess, saying that they're, you know, positively engaged. Is that how I'm supposed to be reading this? That's on, on our form, it's on page, in the packet, it's on page nine. Just to, if you want to peek at that.
Page nine.
Page nine in our packet. The numbers that are in the white, the number that's highlighted in blue, it's five. But if out of the nine.
Oh, I see.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, so school engagement, it went from 22% last year responding favorable to 17%.
And it also dropped for, um, uh, younger students as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that is, um, you know, I think that's really what I, what I list, what I highlighted as a, as a, an area of focus, you know, one of the things, you know, one of the things that I think that we need to do as a district is listen to students more and, and have them, you know, grab the student ambassadors and, and share this, these questions with them and share this data with them and ask them like what, you know, from your perspective, what is it that we could do to make, you know, your, your classes more engaging? It was, I don't know if, if any of you had an opportunity to catch that short video that we did on the student summit, but we talked about it at the last school committee meeting where we had, um, over 80 students participate from Holyoke High School. And they went to the, the Sheridan in Springfield and it was student-led. It was funded by the Bar Foundation. And, uh, that was a question that actually they engaged in themselves. Like how could we make classroom activities more engaging? Um, and they've already had two sessions. I haven't gotten a report back from, from Lori on like what, what were some of the ideas that students had? But I think one of the biggest takeaways here is like that, that's clearly an area of growth for us and we need to hear from students themselves. Um, you know, what, what we could do to, uh, make classroom activities more engaging.
So I'm just going to follow up in saying this would be something I think each school having a school council and meeting on a monthly basis with the principal would be a very positive move, um, in order to get student feedback, um, and, and students involved, um, in every school, just like, you know, Sullivan is doing, other schools are doing. I'm not sure every school has a school council. Um, but in my understanding, it's an actual legal obligation now. So that's going to be something that I'll be pushing for, um, is having a, a, a school council at every school in our district.
Well, uh, Ms. Wilson, the, the school council that you're referring to, I don't think it's, it's not comprised of students.
No, the school council I am talking about is a student school council where, um, students are meeting with, uh, the principal or designee on a monthly basis to discuss topics that are of concern to them, just like, uh, the group is doing at, that we just heard from. But I, I, it would be something that students would be, uh, leading.
I hear you and I don't disagree with you. I just think that the school councils that are listed in your school committee policies aren't the same thing.
But they could be. It, um, so I'm saying they could, they could be discussing broad issues. So that's what I just wanted to bring up.
For just one comment, one of the things that always I focus on when I looked at the Panorama survey results is the school belonging.
Yeah.
That's not where we want it to be. If we can, if we focus on the school belonging, the engagement follows. But if I don't feel like I belong, why would I engage in any of the content? I don't belong here. Why would I be here? Right? So, and I, you know, as we often see in the younger grades is a little bit higher, a lot higher actually. So it's almost double. Um, and as they grow, then they feel like they belong less. And of course there's no magic wand or anything like that, but that's something that we have to make sure that it's a priority so that then students want to be in school and want to engage in the content.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
Um, I was looking at the wrong survey at the time. Uh, one says, um, if you are working on something that matters to you, how focused can you stay? And it went from 39 to minus 19. And then one says, how excited are you about going to your classes? Went from 36 to minus two. So like I said, it's a lot of work that, um, we need to do.
Yeah, um, and just so folks know, um, the, the questions that fall under that category, how connected are, uh, school belonging? How connected do you feel to the adults in your school? Um, how well do people at your school understand the kind of person you are? And when you are at school, how much do you feel like you belong? Those are the three questions that fall in that category. And I want to say from, from the years, uh, 18 all the way through 22, we were at about 42%. Um, and then saw a big jump last year to 60% and then it went down to 56%. You're right. It's still not where we want to be. Um, and it's definitely something that we, you know, it's, if anybody, anybody saw my convocation speech, that's what it was all about, is trying to inspire teachers, um, on the impact that they have on students and not just teacher staff. You know, I, I, I talked about, you know, when I was in school, when I, the cafeteria worker, her name was Sylvia and she made, she made a significant impact in making me feel like I belong. Cause every day when I walked into that cafeteria, the smile on her face, the way she engaged with me when I wasn't there and I came in the next day, she was like, where were you at? I missed you. And, and it's little things like that, that just made me feel like a community, like I belong. And everybody in the school can play a role in making that happen. Um, but you're right, it's not where we need it to be and we need to continue to, to try to, uh, do, uh, find creative ways to, to make students feel like they belong.
Mr. Collmore.
Yeah, excuse me. Uh, along the ways of communications and getting students and parents involved in all this, what are we, eh, the city of Holyoke I'm talking about? Is there any group of people out there, Chamber of Commerce or, or whatever, to bring back suggestions to us to, uh, think about to improve our school system?
Um, we have a, a lot of partners, Mr. Collmore. I mean, we work really closely with, with all of our partners really. Um, and, uh, we have a family engagement coordinator at every single one of our schools. Um, and they have relationships with a lot of our partners in the community. Uh, we meet, um, we meet monthly with the attendance task force and that involves members of the community. So we have, uh, different, different, you know, we have folks from the Holyoke Medical Center. We have folks from, uh, One Holyoke and we have folks from, from all around Holyoke that are invited to, you know, help try to tackle. You know, I think a lot of, a lot of this belonging that we're talking about has an impact on attendance. So in those conversations, um, belonging is always, uh, a, a topic that comes up. Um, so I'm not sure if that answered your question. We do work with a lot of our partners, um, and I know that many of them are, are very ready and willing to support in any way that they can.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
I just wanted to clarify, Ms. Tensley Williams, the numbers I understand are concerning, but it didn't go from 39 to like minus 17. There was a change of 17 in a, in a downward trajectory. And then the other one, there's a, there's a change again. That's just the, the number change. Um, it didn't go, thank goodness, it didn't go to negative two because that would be, you know, it was just, that's just the change number. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that to you and the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. LaFave.
Yeah, I think what's important is really looking at the breakdown overall within all schools, um, versus looking at an overall average between all the schools and the responses. Because although I hear what you're saying regarding school belonging, those numbers are actually a bit more higher. Uh, when we're looking between the three to five and middle school, high school, when you get to that engagement piece, that's where you see the huge difference when we're getting to middle school, high school, where the lowest is 13% and the highest is 19%. Um, that's favorable. Um, I'm not going to count the success center. Cause if I'm not mistaken, that's the same school that has 90% of, um, chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, I think a hundred percent of our students.
And they're at 41% of school engagement. They're higher than the other.
They're operating under a different schedule.
Right, they are. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just looking at the middle to high school. I was trying to go back at the same time in my apologies because I really wanted to see if each individual school is really including that in their grow, low, grow, next step plan. Um, I see a lot. Um, it's just like. It's just like, uh uh one example, grown, no, I don't want that one. That's not the right one because it's not really, it's based off of what staff say versus what students are saying. Um. Yeah, so I'm wondering if that's something that maybe that could be like an extra type of grow plan? Um on how do we engage the students in each of the schools because those numbers are just flat out low. Um and if you expect for participation and for student success, you gotta get those numbers up there.
Mr. Sheen.
Yeah, so looking at all this and I went into Panorama and looked through all the data as well, um after you sent us the link. So, one thing that I'm gonna focus on a little bit because I mean, all of the schools, like the principals and the different school leaders and the schools are focused on that, but I noticed the central office was considerably low. Um compared to all, I think for belonging, it was the third lowest out of every site for that. So where is the I didn't notice in the plans that you gave us with the school responses, where's one for central office with the glows, grows, and next steps and what the plan is with you and your leadership because I mean, that is an area that you have the absolute direct ability to influence. So what is your plan to raise those numbers?
Yeah, um as a cabinet, uh we we focused on what was what, you know, the the schools and district level action. The the next steps of our of our cabinet is to go into a deep dive. We actually had it on the agenda for our cabinet meeting this morning. Um but we do go through that process as a leadership team to uh deep dive into the panorama data and see, you know, what it is that we can do to support. This also includes uh people that are at um at Central Supply as well. It's not just people sitting at central central office itself, it's people that are at Central Supply as well. So um, you know, some of the things that have come up in the past, Devin, I can tell you is trying to connect. You know, I I can tell you when I was, you know, when I was a financial analyst, as an example, in Springfield, my first couple of years. It was really hard for me to to like connect to what the district was doing. And whenever I was brought to, you know, a professional uh learning opportunity where I was engaging with everybody from central office. Um, it made me, it reminded me why I was doing the work and and how like the work that I was doing is actually connected to the work that's going on in schools. And, you know, when we looked at Panorama last year, those were some of the things that we heard from some of our staff is like you know, the professional development that we get, we hear about all this professional development for teachers, we hear about all this, so we designed a a, you know, a quarterly meeting with our central office team uh where they were engaging and, you know, we were doing the equity, last year we focused on the equity training and there was a lot of conversation about the middle school and about uh local control, so those were the real topics, so. Um, this year, you know, we gotta really dive deep into that and as a team get together and figure out what are the action steps that we're gonna take to address the survey that um that was filled out. Did think it was also like participation was not where I'd like it to be either with uh that that group.
Mr. Sheen.
So I understand looking at some of the connections of how people they perceive themselves impacting the entire district, what you talk about that, but just simple questions about like um how often do you receive feedback on your work? And only forty-nine percent of the time did people respond favorably. I mean, that's not a connection to like what's going on in schools, that's how employees whether they're working in Central Supply or working at Central Office, are less than fifty percent of them are feeling like they get um receive feedback on their work. I mean, that that's general management, that's not just climate of the district as a whole, so I guess I'm, as this is being rolled out, I I think like what the plan is for you that you're gonna direct your staff to do to change some of these things because this is these, the people who work in central office and central supply are, their bosses are direct reports to you. So I think that, I mean, whereas the schools, I mean, there is a school leader and culture and climate schools will be different, you can drive some of that, like this is where you can make change. And I and I think that especially language around evaluation, some of the workplace stuff, like I mean, some of the questions about would you recommend working here um as some of the questions, I mean, it was um variable in that. So I I guess I'm looking for the plan, I mean every principal is expected to do a plan, I'd like to see a plan for central office.
Yep. Alright, moving on to the next topic and I believe it is the school calendar, so um in your packet, we have a a draft of the proposed school calendar for next year. Um, we have gone through a process, a vetting process, so you know, and you know, we got feedback from our principals. Got feedback from the teacher advisory group. Um, on, you know, on the calendar for the upcoming year and I I highlighted you know, in that memo to all of you what some of the highlights were, so we're looking to start school on Monday, uh August twenty-fifth for um which would be the first day of school for grades one through twelve. Unlike previous years, we've normally had like a week before uh pre-K and K start. Um and that's some feedback that we had gotten from both school leaders and and staff that um that it shouldn't, that that we should shorten that, so that feedback was implemented in this new proposed schedule where uh pre-K and K would actually start two days after the first day of school, not an entire week after the first day of school. We we managed to still preserve all of the holidays that we have in the professional development schedule aligning um to our assessment calendar. Um, we, you know, uh uh again, just like this year. Uh, we we have that little bit of a longer break for for students um after the the holidays uh returning back on January seventh, which is, you know uh very, you know, similar to what we've done the the last couple of years and uh fe- teachers provided favorable feedback to that. Um, they say that now, but um in June, when we're going an extra couple of days, they might feel a little differently, but we do have some professional development days built into uh that week when students aren't there. Um, so what I, you know, the the guiding questions that we use um to solicit input from all of our stakeholder groups, including D-PAC and um and principals and teacher advisory group is, we talked a lot about the the Wednesday uh eleven twenty-six, the day before Thanksgiving being, you know, an early release and and got feedback on that. Um, we got feedback on whether or not quarters should be split equally. Um, you know, or should we just end it on a Friday? End the marking period, even if one quarter has forty-five days, one quarter has forty-three days. And that was, you know, that was incorporated into the proposed calendar that we have. Um and then just got general, general feedback, so based on all the feedback that we got from all of those stakeholder groups, we put together the calendar that you have in your packet. Um, what I'm hoping to do is is if if you guys have, if any of you have any feedback, if you could email myself and and Rebecca Thompson, uh no later than January eighteenth, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, because we'd like to move forward with the the calendar that's been proposed. A lot of people put uh have provided input to us and and we've incorporated that feedback into that, the calendar.
Mr. Sheen.
I would just ask that if we're doing feedback that way, that all of the feedback with the named person becomes available to us when it's given. I mean, if you're soliciting feedback from school committee members and normally we'd give feedback in a public meeting, I would like the annotated feedback that says, Mr. Sheen.
Okay.
Provided this, Ms. Wilson provided this, I mean, it shouldn't just be kept in an email.
Happy to provide that at the next meeting.
Or whenever it's January eighteenth, but oh yeah, so the next meeting is the twenty-seventh or something, right? Yeah.
Ms. Laura Martinez?
No, it was interesting cuz yesterday I saw on Facebook somebody asking, what's the calendar for next year? I'm like, I don't think next year yet, and everybody's thinking, but I think probably parents are planning, you know, some trips and stuff, and that probably is the cause. Thank you.
Ms. LaFaye?
Yeah, I I was seeing, it's because a a lot of families that do send their kids to camps, like the camp registrations and when they're gonna start and everything, to get the seat now, um the longer they have to wait there may not be availabilities, so it's just be mindful of the timing of when can have this ready.
Yeah, we are and and this, we're way ahead of schedule compared to when we presented this last year, so um, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the the first meeting we had in January, we got your feedback so we can move forward. Um, the the last item in my packet is really, you know, um, we said we would.
Mr. Sheen.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, how is attendance on those late start days for MCAS?
Um, I could, I don't have that information for you right now, but I can get it.
Okay.
So attendance on the late start days that we're actually doing MCAS testing?
Yeah, like do students actually show up late? Like, or is it just the students that are te- like just to see if there's a benefit to actually doing late start days?
Yeah. Uh I'll I'll pull that information together, I'll have um our data team pull it right out of Open Architects. Um, the last thing on the agenda is I I'm seeking kind of uh the school committee's direction. One of the things that, you know, we talked about, um and we talked to the school building committee, had a meeting last week. But we, you know, you're all aware, we went through a process to to land on PEC remaining the the name PEC as a school. And um in the building committee, um so one of the members, a a few of the members actually uh recommended that like, hey, these are great people that didn't get, you know, didn't uh that didn't get selected to be named um on the PEC building, but there are other ways that we can honor those people. Um and based on the the survey, you know, there were a few people that that had a a lot of responses in terms of, um, you know, so Felipe Pantoja was one of them, Carlos Vega, Hal Blain, Hal Blaine. Ann McQ and Betty Medina Lichtenstein, uh those were all uh folks that had come up uh more than a couple of times in the surveys. So um, we could like I'm I'm looking for direction from the school committee, if is 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 that something that you guys want to do? Um if we want to start naming some of these rooms in the new school, we would, you know, we we gotta start like working with with the um um with the building committee to to get that work started. Uh, I'm not trying to push this in any way, but I I promised the the building committee that I would bring this forward to the school committee so that we can start the discussion. About if you wanna name a room or a library or an atrium or a gym. Um, what, you know, what that process could look like and uh these are some names that came up during the survey uh of naming PEC.
Ms. Wilson. So our current policy, um FF for naming facilities, um does talk to, um, the school committee may develop an orderly procedure for that and it does require a two-thirds vote. Um, I can let you know that this is a policy that is gonna be reviewed tomorrow night. Um, uh but I would, I I would not, I do not believe that this policy will be updated. You know, in a time, you know, based upon the process that we're taking in order to, you know, for a public comment review. So I would think that we would still follow um the policy FF. Um, it it does talk about in uh selecting a name, the committee will give higher preference to names of deceased persons. Preferably local people who have made significant contributions to education. And again, two-thirds vote. Mr. Collmore.
Are are we just talking about PEC school right now?
I I think that, so like how I presented it was just PEC school, so we could have like the Felipe Pen- Pantoja Language Services Room. We could have the Carlos Vega Family Center, but I don't think we, like, we're not limited, I to just a PEC school, right? Like, uh as a body, if if you feel any of these people are worthy of not worthy, that's terrible choice of words, but if you feel compelled to name a room or a gym or a a a anything within the, any of our school buildings that makes sense. Um, you know, you're the, you know, what what, is that something the school committee wants to do? Do we just wanna move forward with the project without doing that right now and kinda take that up at a later date? Like, it's, that's really what I'm looking for from.
Well, it was just my thoughts. If we do it for one school, it should be for every school in the system. If if uh if this wishes of the school committee says it could be Sullivan School, it could be MedCaf School, it could be anywhere at all.
Correct.
It's the decision right here.
Mr. Sheen.
But in regards to PEC, um, is it a reimbursable expense if it's done at PEC now?
It would be reimbursable.
So that's the big difference. I mean, if it's, if we're naming something at Sullivan School, then a hundred percent of the cost of that is on the city of Holyoke. If we're naming something at PEC, I mean, it counts as part of the overall school building project.
Yes.
Is that, um, so i- if, if you're asking for for guidance, I guess I I have two things to say about that. I think that the first those people that have been on, that have been named and mentioned are great people. I don't have met many of them, so none of these comments are a reflection on any of them. But I think that when you're soliciting names to name a school, you may be thinking of different people than thinking of names to name a auditorium or a library.
Yeah.
So it's just like, those are great people, but there's other people who could have met some of that criteria that Ms. Wilson said about impacting education and who they look to be deceased and those types of things. I also um whatever we decide to be a naming process, I think there also needs to be a, I don't know what type of deep vetting went into some of the the process. But like, we just need to make sure that, once again, not a reflection on anyone named, but there's nothing embarrassing that could embarrass the district, the city, the the anything about people we name. So we just need to make sure when we're vetting people that we, I mean, naming's a big thing. We've seen things go on all around our uh country with naming, and I'm not saying that but we just wanna do this right. And and that's, and there's a lot of good people, and I think that um, I think what I would be more interested to see, like, if they're, if the committee is interested, is some sort of proposed process specifically for PEC because we're gonna need an interim process since we're not, as Wilson already said, that there's not gonna be something. Right, the current, but there needs to be something about submissions for this and those types of things, so whether that lives again with the um leadership committee, how it was transferred over, um with the the naming, that could be an option, but I just think there, I would be more interested probably too to see a um list of spaces at the new school as well. I mean, because we're not gonna get down to naming a locker after someone, I don't think, but like, um, though my name is available for giving out lockers, so. But I I think that, uh, just to see what some of the common spaces are that could be options for that, but I think if there's gonna be a community process, a larger process, because naming a something other than a school is different, different names may come up.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Oh, do we have to name?
No. We're we're not obligated to. This is, this is just feedback that came out of the building committee. They said, you know, gosh, like, I know we're recommending it be PEC, but we heard some really great, great names and like um, I wonder if we could honor these people in a different way, so I'm bringing it forward to the school committee, not not as a recommendation, but just to let you know that that conversation happened, that's the feedback that the building committee had.
But I think if you name people, we're gonna have people that's going to be very upset because their names should have been, they should have been nominated. So sometimes it's best to let sleep in. I won't say that, but just leave things alone. That's up to the group. I disagree with naming.
Ms. Wilson. I think if we move ahead um and start naming, whether it's at PEC or um at any other fac- I think if we move ahead, um, and start naming, whether it's at PEC or um, at any other facility, um, you know, of course, I did planning for tomorrow's meeting, so, um, you know, part of the proposed change um, that's gonna be discussed at the meeting tomorrow would be, you know, we need a written request from the person who's requesting the change. Um, they need, you know, background information on the person or the organization. Um, you know, and so that should be the pr- process. Even though it's not in our current policy, I think that if we are thinking of naming locations within a building, we should open it up again. We should not just generally assume that these names are the most appropriate. Um, I'm, you know, I'm just thinking because I I can tell you, my husband would probably have a name of a favorite teacher at PEC that may have, you know, instilled in him some values that he carries to this day that he would like recognized um, as someone who attended, you know, the school. So I'm just saying that if we do, I think we need to reopen it again and ask the community um, to send nominations in.
Eric Garcia.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it, you know, I think that that's the feedback right there. Um, that we need to stick to our policy for clear reasons that were brought up tonight. I know the intent was to, number one, right, we heard a lot about these names that had came forward and they, the the building committee it wants to honor them in some way, shape, or form, and also number two, because we're in currently in construction phase, we can build those costs into that project, but it just sounds like our process is gonna align with that, which I think is fine. You know, if 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 next year or two years from now, we're gonna name the gym after somebody, we can, you know, we don't have to, um, you know, be concerned around call, like, I think we can deal with it at that time too. So I think going back to the building committee saying, we spoke about this at length. There were some clear, good reason why, um, we shouldn't just jump at it and we should stick to policy of the school board, which is, and we can educate them on what our policies are. And then that way we can, you know, the 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 folks from the building committee and our consultants can just move forward. Um, but ob- obviously a communication of the community that right, like, when it comes point two, when we're gonna name these, these are names that we hope to hear when we have a process to name X, you know what I mean? I think that's gonna, yeah, it should be, I think we achieve what we wanted to achieve, and we'll bring that information back to the school building committee.
Thank you.
That's your report? Good. Vice Chair Report. So we have our subcommittee appointments. And we have the recommendation to approve the following appointment. Mildred LeFabe to the Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee as the chair and continue with the current second. Open for discussion.
You guys are really quick with that motion, but yet, if you look at the attachment, the attachment is different. So the attachment says that you're gonna have to also include the local control subcommittee. The attachment is different than what the the recommended motion is. So does anybody wanna amend that?
Make an amendment to add. Sorry, I'm just having a glitch with my computer here, trying to get out of a pop a window. I hate them. Whatever she said, second, make the motion to add uh, local control.
So the assumption is that that's what what we wanted to do, correct? I just wanna make sure.
Leadership accountability.
It's not just leadership for chair, but then it'll also be an appointment to the local control and chair.
Aye.
Ms. Feliciano, you look very confused right now. You're killing me here.
So if you, so may I?
Ms. Wilson.
So if you scroll down under Subcommittee Appointment List, not the first, but in the second, if you keep scrolling down, it just has um, Mildred LeFabe listed under uh, Leadership Accountability and Measurement Subcommittee. That's the only uh, place I see uh, your name under Subcommittee Appointed List 2025.
Okay, I, so I. Mr. Sheen.
Um, this is a very quick turnaround, and the vice chair can appoint interim appointments. I'll make a motion to table this, and she can appoint interim appointments, so the work can still go on, and then we can solidify this at the next meeting.
Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Colomar.
Checking.
Oh, okay, seconded by Mr. Colomar. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, passes unanimously. Alright.
So I need, so we need to take back that motion.
Sorry about that.
So someone was. You made the.
Oh, I tabled the whole thing, didn't I? I meant to table the whole thing.
No, someone made the motion initially, and I seconded.
I moved the motion that, and you can only, I tabled the main motion.
Right.
So that was the motion.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Alright, so then moving on to the calendar for our school committee meetings. Everybody had access to that? Uh, Mr. Willihan.
Thank you for the calendar.
Yeah.
Um, I'm looking at it, and then we had two, two meetings in September that were back to back. September eighth and September fifteenth. Is that correct? So two weeks in a row.
It's on holidays. Jewish holidays.
I think.
Mm-mm.
Rosh Hashanah is the twenty-third. And then Yom Kippur is, you know, on the October second. So um, there's no issues with Jewish holidays. But it'd be, so it would be sundown the twenty-second. So I think that's why you moved it to the fifteenth, because Jewish holidays are actually sundown. So the twenty-second would be the start of the Jewish holiday. So that's why you probably put it back to back.
I'm a meme.
Have then just one meeting in September?
Or could we move it to uh, September twenty-ninth? So that there's a break in between, because then our next meeting is October fourteenth, that would allow still break between the two. So I'm, you know, I, I'm just, when I look at my calendar.
Yeah, yeah, that that makes sense.
That we would have, so the dates in September would be the eighth and then the twenty-ninth? Do I make a motion? So I make a motion that we change the proposed date for the September fifteenth meeting to September twenty-ninth?
Second. Second by Ms. LeFabe. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved? Welcome. And thank you, Mr. Willihan.
I'm setting my count.
On to new business. Uh, budget transfer, January twenty-twenty-five?
Motion to approve the budget transfer of one oh, one hundred and nine thousand from the teacher salaries to contracted services for Donahue, Morgan, and STEM. To contract for registered behavioral technician, one for each school to support the ABL program.
I second that.
Second by Ms. Tinsley Williams. Discussion. Mr. Willihan.
Thank you. Um, just wondering why this wasn't put forth through the finance committee first before it comes to this body? That's my question.
My apologies, I thought it was, or um, so I can, I'm surprised that this wasn't sent to you in advance. Okay.
Wouldn't it come here first?
Well, yeah, then you recommend it to the subcommittee.
Motion to send to finance committee?
Yeah, that's.
So the recommendation should have been.
Yes, that's what the recommendation should have read. Come here, it gets recommended to the finance subcommittee and then gets approved there.
All that, that's not what it says, right?
Yep, you're right.
Alright.
Well, my apologies, I will take that back. And here withdrawn, I am going to withdraw the motion, and I am going to make a new motion, and the new motion will be to for the Finance and Operations Subcommittee.
Discussion. Ms. Wilson.
Um, so a constituent reached out to me about this, um, and there is a lot of concerns. Um, you know, the first question was, why are we taking money uh, from teacher salaries? And putting and shifting it to paraprofessionals out, paraprofessionals? Because that's what the RBTs are listed under for contractual reasons. Um, you know, my understanding is that we have not been able to hire those positions in this, in those three schools. And so that's why we'd be looking to shift that money. Um, and then we just don't want, and then the second piece is, we have several um, BTs, um, behavior therapists who are working on becoming registered behavior technicians. And um, we, I just wanna make sure that we and the entire district, um, you know, recognize this and it, and just acknowledging the fact that this is filling the vacancy now. And that if any internal or external candidate comes forward, that we would be ending the contract if they, if they are hired, I should say, let me rephrase that. So if we, if we have any registered technicians, I'm sorry, any behavior technicians currently with an HPS, and they become registered, and they apply for the positions and are granted it, then we would then end that contracted time. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, and I believe I, um, yes. So the answer to your question is yes, that um, had we had any internal candidates that could fill these roles, we wouldn't be looking to a vendor to provide that service. And the minute we, and we're gonna continue to actively uh, try to fill these roles, and once they're filled, we, you know, we, we would um, we would be able to uh, like, cancel that portion of the contract. So we're able to fill one of the positions, we would be able to reduce the contract and work with the vendor. We've been working with stepping stones for, for uh, you know, many years now, um, when, to fill some of the gaps um, that we may have.
And then a follow-up question, I I'm just wondering why we, so my understanding is both RBTs and BTs theoretically do the same job? I'm not sure if you, if you know that or not. Um, the difference being is that, you know, one has gone through some additional training, um, and, you know, they they are registered. Um, so I'm just wondering why we wouldn't just be hiring behavior technicians? If we're open to that, or why we're not posting for RBTs? Because I think I saw on the postings that we're looking for the position that we can't fill, but I don't see us looking for RBTs or BTs which could fill the position that we're contracting for.
Um, I'll have, we'll have to bring the, I, you know, Elliot, if you could reach out to me, and I'd be happy to provide you with a uh, you know, a written response that we can share with the rest of the committee as well.
Ms. LeFabe.
Yeah, uh, we referred this to the Finance and Operations, so like, that, the concerns or what, but before we even go there, cause so that I understand, technically, shouldn't it just have gone straight to them without us having to refer it? Or it comes here first, and then we refer to them so they can refer it back? Okay, cause once you put it here, there's the information is already attached for the public to access. So then now we're gonna be raising questions here and having that discussion before it even got sent to Finance and Operations to do that discussion, to then bring to us for a vote, but maybe it's just me.
Mr. Willihan.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not sure, you know, if it's that's the quality. I think the city council comes, it comes to the full council, it has an uh, motion gets referred to Finance. In this case, Finance Committee will, will vet the order, and then they'll take a vote on it. Um, the vote might be a negative vote in, for, for Finance. And then that negative vote could get referred back to this board. The board, this board might overrule the Finance Committee. That's one example. Or the Finance Committee will approve it on their level, and it gets referred to, to, to this committee for this board to vet on it. So both boards don't have to agree with the motions, okay? But it should be vetted in the Finance Committee first, voted on there, and moved back here for the full discussion again, or vote. That's how I take it. There might be procedural matters around its rules that I'm missing, but, but generally, that's, that's the order.
Mr. Sheen.
I do have a question about the process. So I recall when we had approved this policy um, a couple of months, maybe two months ago now or so. Um, I had brought up in the policy, because it was one of the standards for the local control plan, and I had asked, so is this policy with approving transfers supposed to start now, or does it start in July? And I was overwhelmingly told that it starts in July. And I even voted against the policy uh, when we had passed it. Because I wanted the clarity, because in one area of the plan, it said that it starts now, and another it said, and I was told as a community member, it doesn't start till July. So what is it? And is this transfer really not going to occur until it's acted upon by Finance and the school committee? Or have this money already been transferred? Anyone who wants to answer, anyone who wants to answer that.
At the local control meeting where we discussed it, we talked about the warrant process, the budget thresholds, the cost, you know, centers as part of the budget develop, and the question specifically came up, like, how soon can we do this? And the response was that we could, we could implement this right away. Um, and we were ready to do that, so I was just assuming that that was the charge from the school committee that moving forward now, based on the thresholds that we talked about, um, I believe it was in maybe a month ago or three weeks ago. Uh, we now have the ability for the Chair of the Finance so, and Operations Subcommittee to review the warrants electronically. And they have been being regularly sent to, to him, um, and he's been signing them. And this is the first budget transfer we have had that meets that threshold within the uh, since the meeting that we had, um, that would trigger the transfer approval process.
Mr. Sheen.
Okay, so, I mean, that's not what was described, I think, in late November, early December. It was that this doesn't go into effect in July, um, but I'm, I'm great with it starting now. So this hasn't been transferred yet, and it's waiting on action by the committee whenever that occurs. Okay.
Mr. Willihan.
Yeah, I ag- agree with Mr. Sheen. I think, you know, formally, you know, we're still in receivership, okay? We all know that, I'm checking my watch, yeah, we're still in receivership. Okay, but I think the state, you know, as part of their plan, they want us to see that we're following the, the procedures as we go, so we're getting a head start. That's how I, I take it. as we go. So we're getting a head start. That's how I, I take it. I've been reviewing the warrants. I've been signing off on the warrants. I wish my last name was.
It'll be shorter.
Amazon. Okay, I see a lot of Amazon, a lot of Amazon bills. Okay. Um, so I've been reviewing those. Um, that's in jest, you know me. So, you know, again, I think the process is moving forward. There's gonna be hiccups, like we said, um, because we haven't done it in so long. But, um, I think the process is working. I think the administration and the, and the, and the school board have been working in unison. Thank you.
Mayor Garcia?
Yep, you're absolutely right, Mr. Willihan. Also, I'd add too, cause I think there was a question around the original order currently being discussed versus going to committee. Certainly all items that get put in front of us, we're in a public meeting, there will be room for discussion if members want to bring up questions. I think the best way to navigate that without, without really, you know, understanding that it, it is going to committee for further discussion is to bring up those questions. Make note of it. And then that way, when you have your committee meeting and you're not able to go to ask those questions, you'll know some of the comments that were made when the agenda item originally came up. Probably would be a good way to deal with it rather than try to solve the problems now, cause I think the habit here is we want the work to happen at the committee. Um, and it'll save us time at our regular meetings so that we can go through other agendas, items that are on our agenda. So that might be the best strategy to kind of deal with that. So still ask your questions, Mrs. Wilson or any member. And for the appropriate committee to just jot down those notes and be prepared to, you know, bring it up in the working group.
Ms. Wilson?
I just want to ensure that if I email Mr. Willihan as chair of the finance subcommittee with questions I have about this, that I am not violating the open meeting law. If, if I just email him with my questions. Because we know that. I, okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that if I email him with my questions to follow up on. I'm just double checking that. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I will follow up with you directly, Mr. Soto. Thank you.
Right, so that's the end of the discussion?
Did we vote to send it?
Wait, we have to.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, the motion to refer to the finance.
Seconded already?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved? Do you remember the motion, Ms. Feliciano? Okay, good. Just making sure. Right, so moving forward, approval of meeting minutes?
Recommend we take these as a package? Make a, I'm sorry, make a motion that we take these as a package to approve?
Second that.
By Ms. Tensley Williams? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, meetings, minutes approved. Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, um, I spoke with the vice chair right before this. There is one additional item of new business I want to bring up that couldn't be anticipated right at the beginning of the agenda. Um, and it's just to refer our Title IX policies back to the policy committee. On Friday, there was some dramatic changes to Title IX, um, that went into effect on Friday with a court ruling. So boards were advised to send those back to policy to be revised.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Colomar. Discussion? I see none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved? Right, almost there. Updates of committees? Starting with policy and governance subcommittee, Ms. Wilson?
So I've added that to our February agenda, um, prepping for February. Our agenda for tomorrow night is already in place. We'll be reviewing sections, oh my God, I already forgot, cause I'm busy, um, with all my sections. E and F tomorrow. We're doing E and F tomorrow. Um, so, uh, just so everyone knows, um, it's not as lengthy as others. Um, but we're getting through E and F. Um, and then in February, there have been some policies um, in other sections that we have not brought forward because we're looking for clarification or trying to get more information. So um, we're looking to, um, you know, bring up some missing ones as well as G and H will be in February along with those missing ones. Yes, I am doing the alphabet in my mind. Thank you very much. I appreciate that giggle.
Thank you so much. Finance and operations. Any updates?
Oh, thank you. Um, we're gonna be meeting on January 23rd? Now, uh, I'm probably gonna have some minutes for approval for the full, um, the full committee soon.
Yep. Joint city council, school committee? Any updates?
Uh, no update at this time.
Thank you. Local control subcommittee?
Wasn't that tabled?
We'll have update at some point. Um, but one of the last things that we did work on, um, in our last meeting, um, was talking about what our options will be as we are exiting receivership and starting what the process would look like for the search of a superintendent. Um, the, the team from DESI did some research for, um, the local control subcommittee to review and then be able to present to the full board, um, about processes where they, when they start, when do you get the strongest candidates? Some examples from other districts around the area so that we can make an informed decision as we move forward. Ms. LaFave?
So a quick question. Local, local control did meet in December, correct?
Yes.
So are they still wanting to do every other month or did they want to hit January then March? So they do want a meeting this month?
I would have to go back and check. I know that the March meeting is happening. I don't know the other two.
Okay.
I don't remember. I would have to look.
Okay, thank you.
They send, they send an email with when the possible times for a meeting where that the commissioner was gonna be.
Okay.
Actually.
Ms. Wilson?
So for the community advisory team. I believe I was going to be part of that.
Yes.
I never, I did not get any, uh, communication about that. Uh, Mr. Sheen was kind enough to share with me, but I didn't find out where the meeting was gonna be held or anything, so I was not able to attend today. So I would like to make sure that I'm, if, if I'm still, um, I need to be part of that communication.
Yes.
Going forward.
Just so you're aware, there was, the meeting got.
Canceled.
Canceled. So you didn't miss anything.
That's good to know.
We have to tighten up some communication issues for sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. LaFave?
So hearing that from Ms. Wilson, that's concerning. I believe it was two of you. Um, look at the timeline that we're at right now. We're almost at the end of January. We approved to fund an organization to start doing whatever it is that they were going to do with the community advisory team. The expectation was for them to come back to us in March. Is that still a possibility or are we looking at, it's gonna have to extend? We can't be rushing, um, forums and hearing back from stakeholders. Um, I don't know the reasoning behind a cancellation, but we've got to make sure that everybody that was assigned, and I'm sure they have the list of everybody who was appointed, we, we appointed to from here, that everybody's getting the notification. Nobody's being left out. But they've gotta kind of, are picking up the pace a bit.
So originally, sorry.
There is, yeah.
Um, originally when we were all in discussion phase and trying to agree to a, an agreement and um, uh, once we finally approved, then it had to, um, internally go through our process and, and whatnot. So when we were in that discussion, uh, initial discussion phase, yeah, we anticipated that the first meeting started in December and be a three to four month long process. That pro, our internal, um, going to, you know, the different departments and the signatures and agreeing to a contract. Um. Didn't really come to fruition until probably mid to late December. And then also holidays and all that. This meeting, um, uh, today was canceled. There was some communication errors or whatever. But I would say the combination of things well, has caused our timeline to move up about a month, considering that we were anticipating a start date of December. We're, we're now gonna have a start date of January and if we're looking out, we can anticipate still three to four months. January, February, March, April time, getting a recommendation back to this body. Hopefully if things go as planned according to the scope now that, now that we're in motion.
Ms. Wilson?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
That actually was from the leadership of Council of Lydia Mishra. The advisory team is. Ms. LaFave?
Yeah, um, we're gonna try to schedule something, especially with what you spoke about. Because I believe I, I looked back at what you guys discussed and in regards to superintendent search and stuff like that, then it would have to come back here by February. We only got one meeting left before February 1st. Um, so we'll schedule something soon.
Mr. Sheen?
Just with the local control subcommittee, there is a pending recommendation that the subcommittee made that's just waiting to come to the board. So for the next meeting, there is, we did take an action, so regarding, um, position stuff, so, or regarding the superintendencies, there is a recommendation coming back that it, it will meet at end of January for the 27th.
We have. Announcements. Ashley's, this sip, sip back event, 5:30, Holy Mary go round.
No, no, go ahead, read the ones there, but I do have one.
Oh, you have an announcement. Okay, got it. January 14th, 5:30, Mary go round. January 15th, Lawrence School Site Council at 4:00 PM. Mayor Garcia?
Uh, just so that everybody's here, bring it back to your neighbors, your networks, and for anybody watching at home, there is a special election scheduled for January 28th. A question on the ballot to change the position of whether or not you want to see the position of treasure changed from elected to appointed. There's information, voter information and other, um, related information on the city website. Uh, obviously you can call the city clerk's office as well, um, but just put it in your calendars, make a plan, go out and vote, let your networks know that January 28th, there is a special election.
Thank you so much. Ms. Wilson?
And again, there's a policy on governance subcommittee meeting tomorrow at 5:30 at Suffolk Street.
Ms. LaFave?
This is the first time I'm seeing, what's the Lawrence School Site Council?
Yeah, it's a, a, a group of family members, maybe business, but I don't know who exactly who is on it, but they meet on a monthly basis and uh, with the, uh, principal. Um, this is a group that when we're ready to talk about the budget process, you know, the principal would actually work with them and, you know, ask them. Uh, I think Ellie was talking about student councils earlier, but this, like, school councils are made up of, um, you know, it could be anybody. It could be parents, it could be a, a business partner that is in the community of that school ward. Um, but that's, that's what the school council is.
Mr. Sheen?
I'm just gonna add on to what the mayor said and ballots are actually available now. So if you want to vote by mail, um, you can early vote. Turn mine in today.
So at this point, may I take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, you made a motion, I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But Ms. Tensley Williams seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned at 7:45.